And to begin with, I want to ask if there are any questions on the order of agenda. Any counselor concerned? Okay. Well, we're ready to start on our discussion about vertical housing development zones with Ms. Riebel and I think Jordan Vance.
Good evening, Mayor Fitzgerald and counselors. My name is Kim Riebel. I'm Senior Planner with the city. And joining me tonight, although I don't see him up here quite yet, is Jordan Vance. And we are going to be here tonight to start the discussion about possible implementation of vertical housing development zones here in Wilsonville. We, this concept is a tax abatement, and this was a recommendation to consider implementation that's come out of two recent planning efforts, both the equitable housing strategic plan, which the city adopted last year, as well as the town center plan, which the city adopted in 2019. And we really are just here tonight to, not to get any direction specifically or, you know, answer any detailed questions, but rather, we want to start the dialogue and find out what information is going to be important to you in being able to make a decision about, one, if you decide you want to look at implementing this tool within the city. And then as well, secondarily, what types of questions or research or analysis do you need to be able to make that decision? The two areas we would be looking at potentially would be the Villabon Village Center as well as the Town Center. And the reasons for this are, we've got adopted plans in these areas that really do call for having some element of mixed use development in them, and in particular, wanting to see an active ground floor use. And the purpose of vertical housing, the main focus of it is using it as a tool to help development pencil essentially when integrating that active ground floor commercial use. And so with that, you know, we want to hear the information that you need to be able to make decisions, not only about if you want to choose implementation, but if you do, what other specific policy guidance or additional criteria you might want to apply in doing so. So with that, I will go ahead and share my screen here. I'm going to pull up the presentation and start the slideshow. Can everybody see the slide?
Yes.
All right. So council has discussed vertical housing briefly before, a couple of years back. That was more in the context of one very specific development application. And so, you know, we're hoping that we can begin this discussion again, but sort of remove it from anything tied to a specific project or a specific developer. I'm really just thinking about how, if the city wishes to pursue using this tool, you know, how we would want to go about doing it. So just we'll do a quick refresher overview of vertical housing. A lot of the information at a high level was included in the staff report and packet. There are a couple of local project examples that we have, just to kind of get you thinking about, you know, being able to visualize how it can contribute and the type of building it can contribute to. But I really want to just focus then on the information and questions you might need to be able to make further decisions as we get going, working with our consultant on this down the road. So as an overview, it's a partial tax abatement, not a full tax abatement, based on the value of the improvements made to a property. So if you have a vacant parcel and you construct a project using this tax abatement, the abatement is on the building itself, and it's not on the land value. There is a provision, that is within the statute by state that allows for low income affordable housing, which is defined as housing affordable to at least eighty percent or less of area median income. And that is one that has not been widely used throughout Oregon, but it is there currently. However, the main focus thus far in Oregon has been using this abatement for ground floor retail. The project needs to be specifically located in a vertical housing development zone, so council would have to take action to create the zone and specify the zone requirements. So you would have the ability to be very precise about where you want to allow for this tool to be used. Again, the abatement is generally tied to the commercial component of the residential building. That's really kind of the key piece of it, to try to incentivize mixed use development. The primary goal being, you know, particularly in suburban contexts, it is often difficult for developers to be able to integrate the retail into the building and still make the project financially feasible. And so this is one incentive that a city can use to help bridge that gap in development cost feasibility. This is a very generalized diagram of how the abatement would work. But essentially, you meet the minimum requirements for the ground floor for commercial use, and then for every equivalent floor of residential area, you get an additional twenty percent tax abatement on the value of the improvement. So you don't get as much abatement if you only do one floor of residential, but you get, if you do three floors, you can get up to sixty percent right now. If you do up to four floors, the abatement caps out at eighty percent. And as I mentioned, there is the possibility to use abatement for a project that provides affordable housing, and that does abate the value of the land. In addition, if you had ground floor retail, it would be on the value of the building as well.
Excuse me, Kim. I have a question on the previous slide. Down where it says fifty percent commercial, what do you mean by fifty percent of the abatement, by the value? How does that calculate?
Of the floor. So the state statute that enables this program has a minimum non-residential requirement of fifty percent, and there are some pieces to that that are excluded. But that being said, it's, the city has the ability to define that more closely if they so choose. So, you know, right now, it's a pretty broad definition of what qualifies as that commercial or non-residential use. But as written, it has to occupy at least fifty percent.
Thank you.
Oh, and Jordan, I see you're up here now. Would you like to take the reins on this next piece?
Sure, happy to. Sorry for being a little bit late, folks. Jordan Vance, Economic Development Manager. This is an example, implementation scenario for vertical housing development zone. So Senate Bill 310 gives cities wide latitude in how we want to administer the program. Here's an example scenario inspired by some of our neighboring jurisdictions, and particularly Tigerd. So first, we would adopt the program incentive via resolution, which would outline the applicable program geographies, as well as program criteria and administration approach. Cities can include additional criteria, for example, in how they define ground floor commercial, if we want to be more or less restrictive in that definition, or for example, like Milwaukee sometimes require LEED certified buildings for their VHTZ credit. The second two steps, this is what Tigerd does, and I thought it was a thoughtful approach. So they have a, in their resolution, it gave staff authority to provide administrative approval to qualifying VHTZ projects. So they've developed a two-step program whereby they provide a pre-certification letter to qualifying applicants that allows the developer to secure financing from their lender. And then if all the terms from the pre-certification letter are met, after construction is complete and upon receivable of the COO, the city would bring a resolution to council to finalize the terms of the abatement and work with county to notarize the arrangement. So again, this is just one scenario of how we could potentially implement this program. So we wanted to bring a couple of case studies of how VHTZ has worked in some of our neighboring cities. Here's an example of some high-quality buildings that maybe we could envision in our community. This example is called the Dahlia in Canby, and it's in their urban downtown area. It's a four-story building located in the Canby Civic Block, and includes sixty-nine residential units and over eight thousand square feet of retail, which includes tenants like a bakery, a sandwich shop, a gift shop, and then they have a physical therapist coming soon. This project required multiple tools and levels of assistance from the city. So in addition to the sixty percent VHTZ abatement, there was also SCC waivers, over seven hundred thousand dollars of URA assistance. There was two historical buildings adjacent to this, a former police station and I believe former city hall, that were donated for commercial redevelopment. And then there was city investment in public art and landscaping. Second example is the Rise Central in Beaverton. These are urban units in a suburban town center near the Beaverton City Hall. There's two hundred and thirty residential units in two buildings and over six thousand square feet of retail. I think it includes a root pub as well as a nail salon, and the building is also located adjacent to the light rail. For this project, it required also urban renewal assistance, an eighty percent vertical housing development zone abatement, and a grant from Metro for a transit-oriented development program. So I think this helps underscore just how challenging it can be to achieve mixed use feasibility in the suburbs, that VHTZ is one tool in the tool belt, but it can create a combination of different tools to make these projects feasible. So this concludes our presentation, and I'll pass it back to Kim to help facilitate discussion.
Okay, thank you, Jordan. We do have a few questions. We're asking questions to get your questions, and, you know, we're happy, I think, if you have some high-level questions about the program, we're happy to answer those. But our real goal is that we want to be able to provide you with some meaningful research and data that you can use to guide your decisions at a future work session. And so we're curious, what specific questions do you have about this particular program to help you confirm if you want to pursue this? Any additional research or analysis you would find helpful in being able to make this determination? And any other policy ideas you would want us to look into in terms of options for your implementation? These questions are also in your staff reports, so I'm going to stop the share screen so that we can all see each other again, and we'll let you take it from there.
Counselor Lundvile.
Thank you. Nice to see you, Jordan. Thank you both for that presentation. I noticed in the staff notes that the city of Lake Oswego was not one of the cities that had adopted this policy. And yet, I know that in their downtown area, that they do have one or two buildings where there are residential up above and retail down below. And so I'm wondering, is this a, is it required to, in order to implement that kind of a project? Do we have to have the vertical housing policy in place? Or how does Lake Oswego get to do it and they're not, they don't have it? So that was one of my questions.
They used urban renewal to help fund that project.
So they don't have to have, so they're, so what you're saying is that if there is going to be the tax abatement incentive, then you have to have the vertical housing policy in place, is that correct?
Yeah, for any project that wants to use that tool, you have to have that mechanism in place before that can proceed. I think, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, so I'm guessing that they did not offer an abatement, is that correct?
Well, they didn't use the vertical housing tool. They just used urban renewal. That was their way to incentivize that project. They used urban renewal dollars instead of the vertical housing tool. There's no reason why you couldn't use both of those tools, one of those tools. So I think that's what staff is trying to say, is that this is just one tool in the tool belt. There are others out there.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Counselor Leehan.
Yes. When I was reading the report on this, it was, it mentioned that they pretty much need to be at four stories or higher because the costs are significantly higher at four stories than they are at two or three stories. And I was just wondering what happens at between three and four stories that causes this significant jump? Do you know that?
My high-level guess is probably something related to the cost of the construction itself. That being said, I think probably a helpful piece of information for you all to have is maybe a deeper sort of understanding of what the differences might be in terms of floors, and so we could ask the consultants to look at some hypothetical development examples. That would be one thing, have them take a look at.
Yeah, I mean, I'm familiar enough with building codes to know where the big jumps happen is at six or seven, where you're out of reach of a fire apparatus. Now you have to have standpipes and a whole bunch of other infrastructure in that building to be able to fight fires above that floor. But I didn't think it happened at the fourth floor level that you would have to do that. But I could be wrong, I don't know, I was just curious. And then, then the other question from the discussion was about what the definition of active ground floor retail use is. What's the definition of active? And what would be an example of a not active retail use versus an active one?
Good question.
And who makes that determination, or says, "Your use is not active enough"?
So I believe the Town Center Development Code has a requirement for active ground floor uses. I think the distinction between that versus something that, you know, specifically defined as retail, is that you might have kind of a quasi-commercial space. So, you know, one example could be if you had a leasing office potentially for a building, and, you know, it's active in the sense that people come in and out of it. Does that make it the same as a restaurant? No. And I think that's, you know, one of the things that you all will want to think about in terms of how you want to define, that the statute is very broad. And you might want to think about how you want to define the requirements to be able to be eligible.
I can't remember on the original one we were looking at for Villabon, but my recollection is that it was not very active.
That's correct, Counselor Leehan. They had proposed a couple of different quote-unquote retail activities, one of which was like mailboxes, et cetera, that would serve, basically just serve the units, the housing units that were part of that development. And the other was a fitness club that would also be exclusively used by the people that lived there. So that, those are both quote-unquote retail activities, but they're only serving a very small, narrow part of that neighborhood.
And some uses, like, like, commercial storage units, might serve people who don't live there, but probably would serve mostly people who did live there. And in any event, is not very active if it's just a place where you store your stuff.
Yep.
So it would seem to me you'd have to, you know, definitely define that a little bit better than where we were going before.
Well, I had a related question is, and it's good to know, we can, you know, okay, let's talk about the purpose of deciding that. I'm assuming the purpose of a city, maybe it's going to be one type of thinking in Honolulu and a different kind here, probably ready to go for a vacation. You know, are we looking for, for example, you know, I'm thinking that for the economic viability of the whole place, I would assume we would be looking for a definition that would contribute to some good economic vitality. And if it's just a place that you, you know, some lock boxes where you store your will or something, it's not really creating to, contributing to the activity. But if it's some shops, I actually have been to that Dahlia building recently, a couple months ago, it wasn't fully leased out, but they did have shops that really draw your interest and I think contribute to pedestrian activity around there, which probably helps attract other clients, and so it looks like an active place to be. Is that kind of what you're, what is the thinking behind the whole terminology?
Right, because, and I think the statute defines it as non-residential. That means many things. That technically means somewhere where you can pick up your mail.
But if we wanted to, but if we wanted to go for a certain level of activity, then I suppose we would be looking for a definition that would generate that kind of activity. Is that the idea?
Yes. And so it sounds to me like what might be helpful are some ideas around how you go about defining it, and if there are, what the implications might be in choosing to define it more narrowly.
And I also wanted to know, oh, just a second, Council President Ockervall, I just saw your name, your hand up there. Is there ever an economic goal that you're looking for, like a type of, a type of revenue generation out of the type of retail? So I just want to know what kind of scale and scope of activity we're looking for. So Council President Ockervall, you had your hand up.
Sure, thank you. Yeah, I think it really seems like, and looking at the slides, the presentation, and having, you know, read through the packet information, it really feels like different criteria is going to create a different output, a different type of project. So I kind of want to know what's on the menu a little bit, or what ingredients will result in the dish I want to eat at the end, or something like that. For instance, like the example that you showed in Canby and Beaverton, you know, I believe you had the bullet for the number of square footage that was used as retail. I'm curious, were both of those fifty percent? Were they more than fifty percent? Or what does their definitions, what does their criteria look like to result in such a building? And from the information in the council packet, it seems, and I think it says programs adopted in Oregon City, Forest Grove, Stateon, Springfield, Cottage Grove, you know, more smaller communities as well, Monmouth, La Gram, the Dalles, you know, so I'm curious if we could see some examples from these other communities and kind of have a corresponding, this was their set of definitions, and this is how it resulted. That might be interesting for us, you know, as we're considering what type of criteria we may want to have in place, or what would get us closest to the type of building that we could see really being, you know, thriving and vital and vibrant and, you know, have a vibe around it in Wilsonville. And so I'm curious about that. And then I'm also curious, as we get more information about the piece with affordable housing, and I understand that it's not, you know, in the past has been used in the state of Oregon much with affordable housing, but since it's identified in our equitable housing strategic plan, it seems that we should have more information around that, right? And if it needs to be used in combination with other tools, what does that look like? How does that work? You know, just specifically since it has been identified in that equitable housing plan, I think we need to, we need to know how that can actually, you know, work out. And I understand this is, this is a tool that could be used in, you know, many different areas, perhaps in the city, and we're specifically looking at Villabon and also Town Center. So as we continue to build our knowledge about the subject matter, I would like to understand that piece better.
I have one more question about, or topic you could look into, and maybe it's, maybe it's what Council President Ockervall brought up, but in looking at these other cities of various sizes, if you can gather some feedback as to the success of the program, the longevity of the tenancy, you know, did it, did they stay? And is that, is that also part of the, can that be a part of the criteria, that you want a minimum lease term? And overall, the idea that you brought up, that in the two examples where they use multiple funding tools to help make this possible, and that is, I just wanted to confirm the reasons for that, the, just to lower the bar, because it's such a big expense for a developer to go in and build that, that you would be sitting around waiting for somebody to do that for a long time, if forever, if you didn't have some incentives? Is that the idea?
That's my understanding, is just due to high construction costs, that suburbs basically pay the same construction costs as the downtown urban core, but we can't command the same rent as the urban core. So it's just a very expensive product to produce.
Another reason why you might want to incentivize something is, if there's a public policy good, like related to commercial that you want to achieve, that the marketplace wouldn't otherwise deliver, you might incentivize something like that as well.
One of the issues that, and I think this is, I really appreciate Council President Ockervall's questions and direction, because I was thinking that it would be helpful to have some kind of a comparison chart in some of these other representative communities as to what their criteria is, and specifically, the notion of mixed income. And I think there is a distinction between equitable housing and affordable housing. And so I think, you know, if we're going to be looking at those kinds of concepts, it would be nice to know what other communities have done. And then the only other question I had is, you know, given that we've got the fiduciary responsibility to our citizens, and that this would be a tax abatement program, is there some way to quantify somehow a loss in revenue that the city might experience over the ten-year period of the abatement? And I don't know, I don't know if that can be actually done, because I know it's based on square feet and the size of the project, and the number of units, and those kinds of things. So if there's some way to at least give us a little information about that, that would be helpful to me.
Yeah, one of the things that our consultant had suggested that you could do, it's foregone revenue analysis, and so you would be making some hypothetical assumptions, but essentially what it would do is provide you with some information about the, you know, it's not necessarily a cost, because it's abating something that's not there right now, but it would be able to estimate, you know, what you're giving up in the term of the abatement for using the abatement versus having development that isn't. So we can definitely ask for that.
Okay, well, thank you. If there aren't, are there any other questions before we go to our next, oh, Counselor Leehan?
Yes, I think that was a good point that Counselor Lundvile made.
Yes, I think that was a good point that Council Lindell made, is to try to quantify what any incentives involve over the life of the project. And it goes back to the way the city manager was describing, like a Swigel, they, they incentivized a whole bunch of things to get what they got, including building a multimillion dollar parking garage and, and using urban renewal and designing the street so that it can be taken over by pedestrians and, you know, they, they did a lot of things there, some of which cost significant sums. So you have to kind of look at what, what are you putting in, in the way of public dollars? You're not going to throw the whole shebang at it, all the things that you could incentivize, or else you might as well just build it yourself and it'd be cheaper. So, so anyway, I, I think you have to look at what the cost of any incentive program is and say which, which of these make the most sense for us, for our situation. And I agree that we should be looking at other places, but maybe not just in Oregon, because there are, are other good examples and, and it's, one of the reasons that we have interactions with other cities that are not just in our neighborhood here. And, you know, when we sent the whole planning commission to San Francisco or we sent the whole planning commission to Vancouver, B.C., it was to, to get out of the box that is the Northern Willamette Valley and see, are there other, are there other models out there that we could learn from? So, I mean, because one of my questions would be, as you know, I like height, and would be, does retail have to be on the first floor? Or if you wanted to put a view restaurant up there on the fourth floor or on the top of the fourth floor, is that a possibility? You know, as I've said before, you get up a few stories, especially in the town center area, and you've got a view that goes on and on and on. So, so I don't want to lose sight of, you know, just try to reproduce what Cambie does or reproduce what another town does without thinking what our potential is that's specific to us.
So the question is, I think we lost your audio a little bit during that. Did you get all that?
We, we heard everything she said, Mayor.
We, we heard it fine. Apparently, oh dear, must be my connection, okay.
Oh, well.
Mayor, may I ask one more question, just to clarify? This, does this, this doesn't have any impact on FDCs?
There are no other questions?
I think Councilor Lindell had one more question, Mayor.
I heard that.
Yeah, I'm just want, I just wanted to be sure that this, this, this policy would not impact FDCs, or would it?
That's correct. It's related to the taxes that would be, the property taxes that would be generated, not any fees that the city would charge.
Okay. So that one last question is also, we do want to find out if it has to be on the ground floor. Because I'm going to go to that view restaurant when you open it, Charlotte. Okay. Well, thank you very much.
What, well, I just want to make sure we're, we're tracking with what you expect us to bring back, a deeper dive on how these, how this incentive is used, not just in Oregon, but in, in other places that are using it successfully, kind of looking at the criteria that those other cities have developed and then bringing back kind of a aggregate summation of those findings to council. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
As well, as well as a, a law, law, revenue loss example or that kind of thing.
Yeah, so we can, we can model.
The answer to, yeah.
Yeah, we can model something based on some assumptions and then bring that back as well.
So we've had a good discussion here. I want to make sure I'm not going to the next topic too soon. Anything else? Okay, thank you to our staff for that presentation. And now we'll move to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee bylaws with Ms. Monahan. G'day, Jordan.
I think, I think we're doing community enhancement first, right?
I'm sorry that I skipped that. Community enhancement program recommendations. I seem to, oh, okay, go ahead on community enhancement.
She's got both of them.
That's all right. I just need to know which presentation to, to pull up. Do you see that in front of you?
Yes.
Wonderful. All right, good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Zoe Monahan. I am the Assistant to the City Manager here at the City of Wilsonville. This evening, I'm here to chat with you about the Wilsonville Metro Community Enhancement Allocation for 2021, which is Resolution Number 2894. So just to give you a little bit of background on this program, this is our sixth cycle of the program. It was established by Resolution in 2015, which authorized our intergovernmental agreement with Metro. We extended this last year for one additional year. And as a reminder, we receive $1 for every one ton of wet waste processed at our public services, for money that we can then put back into the community, which is what we're talking about this evening. The review committee that looks at these applications before they come to you is a group of seven. It includes one Metro Councilor, generally four citizen members and two city councilors. This year, it is Councilor Lindell as well as Councilor West. We only have three citizens appointed to the committee at this time, but in normal years, we will have four. The funds that we award each year are not required that they be spent. So the city can choose not to award funds for a few years, as, you know, we can save for a, a large project if we wanted to. Historically, the city has always allocated funds each year. Each project must meet at least one goal, which we'll look at in a moment. They also need to meet the eligibility criteria, which include being in the city limits. They also need to either be a nonprofit, a part of the city of Wilsonville, or a part of the school district, or a school. Finally, we have been working really hard to increase our outreach on this program to encourage more applications from outside of the city. Historically, we have seen a number of applications from city staff. They're excellent projects and they help the community, but we are trying to engage the city through Facebook, the Boon Fair Messenger, and Let's Talk Wilsonville to encourage additional ideas from community members. We've also increased our direct outreach via email to our local nonprofits. The applications that you're going to see tonight were received between November 2020 and January 21. There were originally eight applications that were received. Three were from the city and were withdrawn. One did not meet the criteria and two are here in front of you this evening. These are the goals. Each application needs to meet just one of these goals. And this was established by our inter, intergovernmental agreement, and then we as a city adopted these goals. And the committee can modify these goals or narrow in on these goals each year if they choose to. Generally, we see applications that are focused on that first goal, which is to improve appearance or environmental quality of the community. We've also seen a number of projects that are focused on improving safety. We have had a number of applications over the last three years from the Historical Society, which fall within the result in rehabilitation or upgrade of real or personal property owned or operated by a nonprofit organization. This year, our program budget was about $107,000. So we take the unallocated amount of revenue or funds that have not been spent in the past and then add the additional revenue that we expect to receive through the rest of the year. So that's the quarter three and the quarter four that you see on the screen. Republic Services generally processes about 80,000 tons of wet waste a year. So we do anticipate seeing that $80,000 again in revenue in '21 to '22. In front of you are the two projects that we are recommending for you this evening. The Wilsonville Metro Planning Enhancement Committee met on March 30th and unanimously recommended these two projects. The full applications were available in your materials, but just for those at home that may not have, had the opportunity to look at the packet, I'll give you a very, very brief glimpse of these two projects. The Historical Society's project is a, an oral history project. They thought it was really important to capture 2020 because of the historical year that we had, which included a global pandemic, social justice unrest, and political upheaval on an unprecedented scale. So what they intend to do is to interview local individuals using seniors as well as youth to gather these stories. They will be purchasing recording equipment to do this work, and then they also intend to use the recording equipment to preserve existing oral histories that they have that are on types of recording devices that are no longer sustainable. So just to preserve that record. And this request is for $10,600. The Wilsonville Little League Association is a new applicant this year, and they have asked for funds in order to replace the bleachers at Field One of Wood Middle School. They use this for their practices and games, and the intent is to replace the bleachers, excuse me, to increase safety and usability as well as the appearance for the facility. As a part of the conversation with this group, we did make sure that there was an agreement or understanding with the school district that they would be doing this work and that funds are not already available. That is another requirement of this project. It's a reimbursement program and there cannot be other funds that could do these projects. So with that, the, oh, excuse me, the bleachers were for $6,750. So the request before you this evening, which is on the consent agenda, is for a total of $17,350 for the allocation of the community enhancement fund allocation this year. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And then again, this will be on consent agenda this evening. And I will stop my share screen.
Council President Ockervall, you have a question?
Thank you, yeah. Thank you for the presentation. It's always fun to read through these application materials and this is the fun part, right? It just is. But I was curious if in your discussions about the oral history project, if you have more information about what the resulting output, what the recordings, how they may be accessed or used, you know, it kind of makes me think of the NPR or OPB's, how they have those little snippet stories, family members interview each other, or, you know, sometimes they can be really quite touching and meaningful and it's, it's really a lovely thing to be able to experience listening to some of those stories. So how might the community be able to access some of the output from that project?
That's an excellent question. So the Historical Society has mentioned, at least during their presentations to the committee, they do intend to make the recordings available to the public. So either through their website, which is housed on the City of Wilsonville library page, or through other means, it is expected that these will be available. As a part of the project or as a part of receiving these funds, each project applicant is required to provide a, a written report at the end when they complete their project before they can get their final allocation. So that will also provide some idea of what they were able to accomplish. I'll also note that they are working with an individual who had previously been the editor, is my understanding, for the Wilsonville spokesman. So there is a level of professionalism that's brought to this, that the Historical Society is working with someone that is used to conducting interviews. They want to make sure that the questions are somewhat similar, so the collection, if you will, is, is somewhat consistent. But the intent is to have those experiences available for those now and in the future.
Great, thank you. Council Leehan?
I should, I should disclose, I am a member of the Historical Society, but I do think this is an important project because of the timely nature of it relative to the media. You know, and it, and it's hard to know going forward, what media is going to be the one that everyone should want to use, because we have media that's been collected over, you know, the last whatever, 50 years. Some of it's on cassette tapes, some of it's on, lot of it on VHS tapes, some of it's on probably Super 8 movie things, that, all of which are deteriorating. So, you know, they, they don't last forever. And even looking forward, we know that CDs and DVDs will also pass by soon. They're, they're already becoming obsolete. So figuring out the media on which to save these things is, is a big challenge for everybody. For anyone who's doing archive work, it's, you know, it's an important question and, and we have some good professionals who are advising, working on that, who work in archive kind of work. But it's, it's timely because it will start to deteriorate and we won't, won't be able to access the stuff we have.
Well, I, I think it's a, it's a great idea. There are some great stories out there, and in fact, there are a lot more stories that we want to find about people who have lived here in years past of all kinds of different backgrounds and origins to Wilsonville, and it would be really important for current and future people to be able to hear those stories. Any other questions on the bleachers? We've got to have bleachers, that's good.
Bleachers, good.
All right, thank you. If there's nothing more on that, did you get what you needed, Ms. Monahan?
Yes.
Okay. And so now we will go on to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee bylaws.
Wonderful, thank you, Mayor. So you should see a blue screen in front of you, blue presentation. So this evening, I am here to walk you through our Diversity Equity and Inclusion bylaws. This is Resolution Number 2893. As you recall, this was something that the council directed staff to look into and move forward with back in January, and we've been meeting over the last few months to really dial in these bylaws and get them to a point where you are comfortable moving forward to establish our new Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee. So I'm going to walk you through just a few high-level elements of what is in the bylaws to make sure that you're comfortable with the language that you have in front of you before it goes on consent this evening. So as identified in Section 4A, there will be between 11 and 13 members appointed by the mayor. The terms will be generally up to two, three-year staggered, or excuse me, up to two, they can serve two, three-year terms. Excuse me, that was a little tongue tied for me. And this is outlined in Section 4D in the terms, as well as in Section 5, which outlines the initial terms. The bylaws in Section 4S also outline the youth members. These clearly identify that youth, up to two youth members can serve for up to two one-year terms, and they can be from any area high school. The purpose, which is established in Section 2 of the bylaws, outlines what we're trying to achieve with this committee, which is having a group that can help provide the city council. city council with advice on policy direction, recommendations on public engagement strategies, advising the city on culturally responsive services on our programming and communication strategies. It's also intended to help us to identify local community leaders and build leadership capacity within our community and making sure that we are identifying diverse and including diverse communities within our city. This section should look really familiar to you. This is Section 4C, the appointments. At the last meeting on March 15, the city council directed staff to move forward with this language. There is one modification. The language that the city council had directed us to use originally said disability, so someone with disabilities. After speaking with our consultant, he recommended that we use differently abled. And the materials that were provided to you on page 48 of your packet was the resolution. The resolution did say disability in this item, but I have worked with our city recorder, Kim Belize, to update this. It was accurately reflected in the charter on page 53 of your packet. So you basically had both options in your packet, but we have updated the resolution that we would hope to move forward to this evening, so that it reads as follows on your screen. "The city council will strive to appoint members to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee who bring their lived experiences regardless of their immutable traits, including but not limited to race, ethnicity, LGBTQ+, gender, socioeconomic status, or history, differently abled, age, amongst other identities. Appointed members will be expected to think broadly in terms of how issues of racism, sexism, ableism, and other discriminatory and prejudicial bias impact other residents in, all, excuse me, all residents in Wilsonville." Also noted in the bylaws, in Section 5 are the initial appointments. Positions 1 to 5 would be one-year appointments, 6 to 9 would be two-year appointments, and position 10 to 13 would be three-year appointments. So these are the staggering terms to ensure that we have a rotating group of individuals serving on the committee. And finally, in Section 6, these are the organizational elements. So these are standard in our committees, that they would have a chair and a vice chair. They meet a minimum of four times a year. There is a quorum to vote, and that they be subject to public meeting law. So this evening, we hope that you will adopt the Resolution 2893, which will adopt these bylaws and establish our new Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee. And then we do expect that the council will appoint the committee later this fiscal year, either on May 17 or at our first meeting in June. With that, I'd be happy to answer any comments, concerns that you may have before hopefully moving forward with this resolution.
Anyone have a question to begin with? Okay, I do have one. I have been, Counselor Leehan and I have been conducting a number of interviews. I think we've, it's been a very good experience and significant conversations we've had. One point that I think our consultant made, and maybe he just didn't get as far as the bylaws, I just want to share that he was thinking that perhaps the committee might want to have a vice chair or maybe co-chairs or something like that. It was just him making these suggestions in the conversations, but I'm seeing that these bylaws are more standard format, and that it would be reasonable to go ahead and have a chair and a vice chair. So I just wanted to bring that up.
Yes, you're correct, Ms. Monahan, this is standard, and I believe that City Manager Cosgrove had mentioned earlier, as we've been having these discussions, that that last section in amendments, that we can always ask the new committee to reevaluate the bylaws and make sure that we address them to be what they need them to be.
Okay, good. That's consistent with our conversations, then.
Well, conversely, if you think it's important, we could add it now. It's not a major ask. If you just want to have the city attorney insert some language and say chair and vice chair, it's up to you. If you feel strongly about it, we could, go ahead.
Well, I think we saw that it does say vice chair and vice chair, correct?
Yes, it's chair and vice chair currently.
Right. And so if the committee found that it was better to have two co-chairs or something, they would have that option?
Yes.
Okay.
They would make a recommendation.
That's consistent with our conversations.
Okay.
Any, anyone else have any comments?
Yeah, I do have.
Counselor Leehan.
Yeah, so mine is kind of a question comment. I don't know, the, I don't have any problem with the bylaws, but when you were talking about the differently abled, and how are, what's the appropriate language on these things? I know I use the language of mental health department that was, that we are living under with regards to Bill Bois, which is housing for the mentally ill and developmentally disabled. Now, that was from 10 years ago, and I don't know if the state of Oregon has changed that reference, but it had to do with that we were providing housing for people from damage and from Fairview, which was mostly, you know, developmental issues as opposed to mentally ill things. So they were specifically mentioned in both of them, I mean, always jointly, the mentally ill and developmentally disabled. But I don't know if, and so I use that terminology because that was the land use piece. But anyway, I just raise that as a question. We should think about how is, I don't even know how, if it's, it must be somewhere in city land use conditions that we had to provide 10 acres for those uses, but whether that's labeled accurately anymore is another question. So just want to raise that since I hadn't before.
Well, one other point on this subject, I was participating in a Diversity Equity and Inclusion workshop on Zoom with the school district, and one of the participants made the statement that he preferred, just in conversation, that he just made a statement that it was his preference that thought that differently abled was better. And so it may be a difference of opinion, different ways of using these terms. Americans with Disabilities Act is still called that, but it was started a long time ago, as well as the land use terms. So any other comments on that? Well, seeing if there's no other comments, are we maybe giving the thumbs up to moving this onto the consent agenda?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Monahan.
Thank you very much.
And I appreciate that. And now we'll go to the last item on the work session, which is regarding the purchase of three 21-passenger CNG buses.
Good evening, Council. I'm Scott Simonson. I'm the city's fleet manager. I'm here with you tonight to see the contract on three 21-passenger compressed natural gas buses. This one's a little different in that we combined three different grant projects into one procurement. We did that because the buses are all exactly the same. So you'll see in the staff report, there's some information on what those funding sources were and what the three projects are. It complicates things a little bit because the match percentages are different on each of those three items, but the totals, the total of the contracts, 382,386, of which 312,598 will be recovered through those various programs, leaving us with a local match amount of 69,788. So pretty good deal, three buses for $69,000. One thing I would point out about this also, as this pertains to our goal of getting Smart off of diesel and gasoline, these three buses, once they go into service, will put us over the 50% threshold of alternative fuel buses. So we're pretty proud of that. Three bids on an RFP, the lowest of the three was deemed unresponsive. The two remaining, this was the lower of the two, so it was selected. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions or comments, councilors?
That looks like a very big fleet behind Mr. Brashear's.
He's building a kingdom.
No idea. We had that many buses, buses?
That's all electric buses as well, and all electric.
I see.
Well, I wanted to comment, I would comment that it is, I had a tour of the Smart headquarters with Mr. Brashears and Mr. Simonson recently, and I went out and looked at the buses. We saw one new bus getting its lettering applied by a local vendor and met some of the staff. It was just very good to see how well the program is going, and I just want to thank you for your work in finding this funding. Anyone, any other comments, or Mr. Brashear, do you have anything? Oh, we've got Counselor Lindell.
I just wanted to echo my congratulations, too. I don't know where a city can get three compressed natural gas, full-size buses to put into their fleet for that kind of price. So well done. Thank you on behalf of the city.
Right, and I might thank you. I might add that I believe one of the buses, Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe one of the buses is being paid for by TriMet. Is that correct? This is one of, so TriMet is paying for one of these buses, which is, just does my heart so good.
Wonderful.
Yes.
It's wonderful to have collaboration.
Yes, yes. We appreciate their help on that, so very nice of them.
And I, one thing I would add to this is I recently also had the opportunity to tour, one of our local businesses is not far from the transit center, and they talked about how important it is to be able to give their employees the option to use Smart and also Wes and Max, the connection with TriMet, to come to Wilsonville for employment opportunities. They brought that up, so all these things come together in a number of different ways. Well, is there anything else? Do we have a thumbs up? Any questions on the contract? I know people have read this and brought up some points, but I think has everything been answered? So I think we can give you the thumbs up. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Well, with that, councilors, we will adjourn the work session at 6:20 PM, and we will resume at 7 PM on the same link. We'll see you then. Meeting adjourned.